Everybody here? We're gonna, we have a hearing tonight. For a roll call, it the records show that Supervisor Fisher, Cassiole Shafani, Guzio, and Barney are in attendance. Would you do a swearing in if anybody wants to get testimony, please?
Yeah, if there's anybody in the audience who would, uh, if they're making an argument.
Opinions aren't testimony. I swear that. I swear my opinion will be the truth. All right, this is, there's an application for the tentative approval of a planned residential development by Keystone 76 Development LLC on parcel ID number 140005-00-00-0014-03, located off Glass Hill Road on Coomer, Glass Hill Road and Coomer Road. Just last month, the property was re-zoned from R2, I mean, from R1 to R2 Medium Density Residential District. And I know the board's been up on it. Dan had worked with us to come up with some conditions. As you're aware, that on a PRD, the developer asks for certain, uh...
Concessions.
Uh, setbacks and things like that, lot sizes that works best for his plans for his development. We in turn have the right to ask for some off-site improvements that we think will be impacted or negatively impacted. So Dan, I know you have some conditions there. I just want to, have you mentioned those first to what we're considering? Or what we're asking the board to consider?
Sure. Wouldn't it be more appropriate for the developer to kind of show the plan first?
Oh, all right, all right. No, no, go ahead now. Yeah, I wasn't thinking about that yet.
Chris, what I think you should do is go over your plan, have your engineer go over the plan first.
If you don't mind, we'll have Bob go over the whole plan and then I'll come up and just talk about the off-site improvements.
Oh, good, okay, all right. Yeah, I understand you're further along than I thought, but I mean, I know Dan, it normally helps us come up with conditions that we think are appropriate.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Rob. I don't know if you want to see that one.
No, no, you're prepared for this one. Go ahead.
That's the one, yeah.
This, this one actually has a little bit more detail than that one. Robert Beining, B-E-I-N-I-N-G, Efler and Company. Good evening, everybody. On behalf of Keystone 76 Development 2 LLC, I am here to talk about Steel Town PRD. What I plan on doing is just going over the design bullet points and after that, Chris, discussion, off-site improvements. You mentioned the parcel number 140050001403, which is currently owned by the Shafanis, located off of Coomer Road, south of, south of the Montour Trail, is pretty much right up the road here up Glass Hill Road. Is zoned R2 Medium Density Residential, is a 63.82 acre parcel. What we are proposing on this is building 127 units, of which 85 will be single-family homes and 42 will be townhomes. Of the 63.82 acres, 30.46 acres will remain open space, so nearly half the property will remain open space. Of that 18.86 acres that will remain undisturbed, of that 30, 18 will, almost 19 will remain undisturbed. The density is 1.99 units per acre. Our minimum lot size is 7,726 square feet, which the lot, minimum lot width is 62 feet. Setbacks are 25 front, 10 side, and 25 rear. Proposing 4,440 feet of new roadway designed to the township standards at 22 feet wide. Will be four-foot sidewalks on each side of those cartways. We're providing mailbox cluster on Cowden Road as well as overflow parking locations. Development will be served by public utilities, water and sanitary. Site does balance, earthquake-wise, we're moving about 290,000 cubic yards of cut. On the perimeter, there will be 50-foot and 25-foot buffer easement. What's nice about this, the location of this site is it allows quick and easy access to the newly constructed Route 576 as well as Interstate 79, with multiple ways to access the site from all directions. Well, our supplemental, we've met the ordinance requirements of 24042, which is the application of a PRD. In addition, we follow the regulations for the R2 PRD in section 240 dash, 240 dash 43. About the planning commission, I know stormwater was one comment that came up, so I'd like to address that a little bit. As mentioned, we're proposing four stormwater control facilities which overcompensate for the stormwater of the site. These facilities will collect stormwater, controlling the release and also allowing the water to infiltrate into the pro, into the ground on the site. What water is released is required by state regulations to be actually less than what is currently reconstruction. So the release, release of water will actually be less to adjoining properties. Released water is directed down to, it's released into existing waterways, which ultimately reaches Miller's Run. We are aware that there's a culvert under Montour Run that we will make sure is adequate through the design process. Ultimately, there will be no water reaching township property below the proposed development. And in conclusion, I'd just like to say, I believe this plan is in alignment with your comprehensive plan, provides much-needed housing to the community. I think it's overall pleasant design.
Bob, the detention basins, where they will discharge, did they discharge to the blue lines on the map? Can you point that out a little bit further?
That is, that is correct.
Where the water's gonna go?
That is correct. By, by regulation, we have to discharge into a point of interest, which is a water course.
So you would define basin two is going to the water course in the center of the property, basin four is going to the, to the water course to the, I guess that's probably to the east.
That is correct.
And then on the left-hand side, where's that water gonna go in that basin?
There's actually a point of interest over there. It's not shown in blue because it may be ephemeral, but...
There's a stream over there to tie into, okay. And then the one up at the beginning of the plan, that'll go where? Is that gonna tie to a storm sewer or something?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So we, we've reviewed the plan in terms of the, of the stuff that's been said here tonight, and they do comply with the requirements of the PRD ordinance. I know there was a lot of discussion about lot sizes, and they have increased the lot sizes. I believe that the density of the plan went down, that being the number of lots were decreased to achieve at least along Coomer, Coomer Road to get nice, bigger, wider lots, the corner lots coming into the plan. So I, I think that with the curves in the road and everything that's proposed here, it's going to be from a, from a, from an aesthetic point, it, it won't be like a bowling alley that you're gonna see a big line of, of homes, there's enough curves in the road and other things with the houses all look different in terms of their, the way they look from the road. So all of those things are positive in terms of the layout. There's no cul-de-sacs that are proposed. So from, from my standpoint, I think it's, it's a good layout. It does, it does conform to the regulations. And then for the board's information, you know, this is just the tentative PRD step. This isn't detailed engineering. They still have to come back with detailed engineering plans that, that further meet the requirements of our Part 6 of the Unified Development Ordinance, which are our detailed engineering requirements. They'll have to make sure that all the stormwater works in a more detailed fashion, but from a preliminary standpoint, a tentative standpoint, this will be the guideline that they work with as they go forward in that process. That's, I just say it.
I think you said you'd have the presentation for the condition or the, the improvements that you're offering.
Chris Hoke, H-O-K-E. Thank you for allowing us to be back here with you guys tonight. I'm gonna pass this out. Does this work? Yeah, perfect. So I, we're grateful to be a part of improving this township and as we talked about, I think with the curvature and with the, the product, and we've talked with Ryan Holmes, and we're gonna make sure that we're following their policy in terms of making sure we don't have multiple homes in a row that look exactly the same, have the same colors and, and, and that they don't have, we're gonna make sure that they are, they have personalities. So there's gonna be a lot to what we're trying to do to, to, to meet what you guys desire in this township. If you remember in, in our previous meeting, we talked about, we agreed to contribute $1,500 per lot to the Muse, what's the exact word, the Coomer and Moose Road, Muse Bishop Project, right? So that's a total of $190,500. And so there's a, there's a potential in conversation with, with Dan Dazeroth, I know that there's about six projects that are, that are eyeballed here, some that are eyeballed by you guys, some that we have to do per requirement, per the development and, and the plan. So I just want to go through this with you. That's, as we know, the sanitary sewer is down at the public, by the Public Works Building, so we gotta run it up the hill. That's gonna be incredible for future development and, and up on top of the hill. And so that's gonna cost us about a half million dollars to bring that up. That was a, a bid that was, I think, received by the township at one point, and so it's gonna be about approximately a half a million dollars to bring that up the hill. And then Cowden Road, we, we have, by, by ordinance, we have to improve both sides of that road because we have property on both sides of Cowden Road, and we need to make that road wider to 22 feet and make it per spec. And we've got that bid it out, and it's about $200,000 to do that. And to part of the ordinance, Coomer Road widening, it's $150,000 to do half of that road per our requirement. So that's $350,000 for paving. And then again, that the $190,500 that we're gonna contribute towards that Moose Bishop Project that will be paid out per lot, $1,500. And then in discussions with Dan, I was made aware of the Glass Hill Road guide rail, which is 20K, and then the Vincente and 980, site distance improvement of $10,000. So that, those total of all six of those potential off-site improvements, the total cost is about 107, 1,070,000. And, and so what we're proposing, we'd like to offer is we've already, we're responsible for Cowden Road, so to pay the $200,000 for the Cowden Road, both sides widening that, bringing it to spec, and then the sanitary sewer, bringing that sanitary sewer up a half a million dollars, which will greatly benefit the, the township. And then we've already agreed to $1,500 a lot. We would, we would like to extend that to $2,000 a lot, which would take that number of the $254,000. So our total contribution for improvements we're, we're offering is $954,000 of a total of potential off-site project costs of 1,070. So we are, we're offering to pay 89% of projects that the township desires, that we're required to do, but also ones that we aren't required to do per the, per the, per the plan and per the approvals. And, and so that's what we're, we're offering is to bump that from 1,500 to 1,000 in that total cost. And we would like to, to put that out there for your approval at this time or whenever you guys vote.
I would ask the board members if you have any questions for the developer or Dan or comments.
Chris, have you considered, looked into running that sanitary sewer line? It may be shorter distance, maybe cheaper down Cowden Road to tap into manholes where there's service lines in the town of Montour that you wouldn't have to deal with.
I, I know that we worked with the gentleman, like Zarancheck, is that his name?
Yeah, he's in charge of the, uh...
Yeah, so we worked with him, and he drew up the, the design that we're pretty much using. So he, he, we've been working closely with him.
Okay, I just thought maybe you wouldn't have to. Go ahead, Dick.
Hey, wait, you have to say your name.
Dick, can you, can you speak into the microphone because we're recording? Thank you.
Sorry. Half of the site, it flows the other way, so it's impractical to use that. It's the main route when everything will flow the other way. And it's still come up to the top of Glass Hill Road where, where Coomer Road is, so it helps the whole township that's up there.
So you would run your sanitary sewer line down Glass Hill Road? Is that what you're?
It, it's in the middle, up across the, across the trail, and then comes up to the corner of Coomer Road and Glass Hill.
So, so it's pretty much...
Because of the terrain that we...
I was just trying to see that you wouldn't have to bore underneath the Montour Trail and then Miller's Run Creek, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan. I think we dead-end a manhole over at the old Public Works Garage. I did the paving prior when they ran and it was six, the lines through 50 up here, and I know where they sort of dead-ended at was the parking lot of the tennis courts. We did go across up Grange Road slightly and everything sort of dead-ended there, so they would have to tie into something on, on the other side of the creek, Dan, on our side. Is that, is that correct? The sanitary line is gonna have to tie in somewhere to an existing trunk line, which is on the other side of the creek. Is that correct?
That's correct, absolutely.
And so Frank, just to answer your question, we, the drawing that was done is designed by the township, right? And that, and you've tried it, and then also the one that was prepared by Mike Zarancheck, both had us coming up that hill.
Yeah, because of the grade and terrain, I guess you have to go that direction like Dick had stated.
And plus didn't want to rip up Glass Hill Road.
Yeah, that was just repaved two years ago, brand-new pavement.
Dick, can you please state your name and affiliation for the record?
Dick Harrington, H-E-R-R-I-N-G-T-O-N. Chris and I are the development team.
I think though the same effect is when the sewer where they get it to, it will be able to service, it will be able to service this property, but it will also be able to be extended to service other parts of the Cowden Farm that don't have service right now. So it sets the township up in the future for, for potential extension.
We've asked, we're putting a manhole right there at the main entrance at Coomer Road, like Coomer Road, where we have a manhole that can be tied into, that can run all, everything all the way down, so it'll open up development all up on the hill.
Okay. Good, thank you.
There's even a possibility for people on Vincente, because that's gravity would, gravity flow, part of Vincente would gravity flow down there, so people, if they have malfunctions, they might get together and they might be able to have an extension up there. Right now, it's so far away from their homes, but this would bring it a lot closer to them.
And how, you, you mentioned, I think the engineer mentioned, how many lineal feet of road improvements or repairs on with Cowden and Coomer together? He did put a number out?
No, he said 4,000 feet of new road, right?
Four, oh, 4,000 feet of new road in your plan, interior.
Yeah, Cowden, Cowden's about 1,250 within our property, and it's, that's about two-thirds of the length of...
Yeah, me and Joe walked it, I think, last week. Joe said, I'm familiar. Okay, thank you.
I do have a really quick question. So like before we commit to doing guide rails on Glass Hill Road, have there been any sort of engineering studies to say that it's warranted?
Again, they're all, these are all just potential issues. I think what, what the developer's committed to himself is he's gonna make the improvements to, to Cowden Road. That's, that's in his proposal.
Right.
The money that he's contributing to other potential off-site stuff could go all to Coomer and Muse Bishop. It could be used if there is the ability to put it on guide rail on Glass Hill, it could be used there. It really would be, that's why the, I mean, it, you know, I've been in the middle of this whole thing, trying to make everybody understand the numbers. Because until last week, I got Chris focused and said, hey, Chris, you better figure out how much this all is gonna cost because this is on your plan, and that's, that's what this all represents. So I, I guess my point is, by him offering the $2,000 per lot, the township can use that for the Muse Bishop and Coomer intersection? It could use it for other things that it wants to do down the road. It's not committed to any one, one particular...
That's what I wanted to make sure.
This is just purely for cost analysis, is basically what we're...
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, whatever makes sense or what the Public Works Director thinks.
That's what I wanted to get out to the public, because I'm afraid if we put this list out there and then we use all of this money on, say, Coomer Road, then somebody's gonna come back to us and say, wait a second, the developer had a list that said that there were guide rails required on Glass Hill, and they're not. So we just need to make it clear to the public that this is like a conceptual list right now, and we'll work towards what actually needs to be improved in the net, when you come back to us again.
So, so Tom asked at the beginning, and I didn't, I didn't bring this up yet, but my recommendation on a, on a, on a condition would be that the developer contributes a fee of $2,000 per developed lot payable at the time of application for the building permit for off-site improvements. That's it, no list of anything, but just off-site improvements.
Yep, but we need to make that clear. I'm glad, yes, I'm fine with that, but we need to make that clear to the public so that they're, like I said, they're not coming back and yelling at us and saying, this was the six things on the list. These are, because what if we decide later down the road, oh, shoot, we didn't think about this, and this is more important as an off-site improvement than doing guide rail? Bill brought up a good point, like that Glass Hill's already super narrow, so you add guide rails to it, you're making it even more narrow, and is that really what we want to do?
Yeah, I don't know that it even meets warrants, but we just put it in there as a potential project.
Yeah, I think it's fine, a list has potential.
I believe we have to put guide rail for safety. I mean, we're not narrowing the road, the guide rail is gonna be offset from the edge of road. I actually drove down here today and looked at it, and for the record, we may have to do something in-house here. I stopped, I drove down underneath the Montour Walking Trail trestle, got out with a tape measure to measure the width of the concrete embutment, and as I was there, a car come flying around the bend, I mean, flying downhill around that curb, and I told him, slow down, he hit the gas and went. And just right after that, another car coming at a pretty good rate of speed, so we probably need to install some signing of narrow road ahead where we...
One lane through.
One lane, or we put a lessened, a speed limit going down that hill, because it was pretty bad this morning, two incidents right there with a matter of 10 seconds when I got out.
And Mr. Guzio, I think that what Dan's proposing is just making it a contribution to the township, and you guys can use your discretion on how you want to use those funds.
Well, these improvements here, this is what you're just saying, needs done or was brought to your attention.
But these were ones that went in discussion with your township engineer that were brought to our attention, that, that they were discussed, and so that's the list, but I think...
Okay, what are you willing, so, so we're clear, we get a clear picture of this in finances, what are you willing to commit to then on this list?
So we're willing to commit to paying, to improve Cowden Road up to the township spec, run the sanitary sewer up, and then manhole it up there at the, at the top of the development so it can feed the rest of the, the, up top of the hill, and then $2,000 per lot, which after, with 127 lots, 254,000, so a total of 954K, which is 89% of the list above.
Yeah, so the total cost, you have it there at a thousand, a million 70,000, and you're willing to...
Contribute 954.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel that's reasonable. I think this board can work with that.
And I think the purpose now...
That's a great, great deal of improvements here.
Frank, I think the purpose that was the, they, he needs to know, cap that we're gonna basically look for. We can't leave it open because then, then he, he'll never know what kind of costs he's gonna have, so this basically caps it.
Yeah, I feel that we kind of covered, I mean, the major things here. We've all lived in this area, I mean, every member on this board's been almost lifelong residents here, Cindy's been at least 20, the rest of us been our, our whole lives. We know the area, the terrain, and what we're being faced with this plan coming in. And I think this is a great deal of improvements, from what I see, and, and, you know, the money.
Cindy mentioned to make sure that, that wants the public to be aware of it. The public that matters is here.
Yeah, if something down the road, something comes up, I, I realize what Cindy's saying.
I know, but I'm just saying, the people who are here come to our meetings all the time, they're hearing it anyhow.
Now, the, the top side of Glass Hill Road has an embankment with trees, and then you're right, as you come out of that, there is a stretch of possibly 400, 500 feet, Dan, where if somebody went off the road, I think our township did power up some millings on the side of the road a little bit, but that would be the area that may need, you know, guide rail.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look, just make sure it meets warrants. I mean, so everybody understands the state has criteria for guide rail. If you don't meet the criteria and you put it in, you can be liable for putting the guide rail in, so you have to make sure that it meets warrants. And, and again, this, again, we put it on this list just to identify it, and then potentially it could be a project if it met warrants and the township wanted to do it. But again, the idea of this list was to kind of get all the numbers in one place and show what he's willing to pay for, for, for those things.
I think Frank's right, like this is a lot of money you're, you're willing to offer to help us. These are problems that currently exist now even without the development there, so that you're willing to pay for almost 90% of off-site improvements is great.
Dan, I wasn't able to tell from the plan, but would extra right-of-way be acquired for the roads that about the, for example, Glass Hill? You know, generally we get, it would be a dedicated 25-foot, I guess, from center line.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they'd be willing to give us the right-of-way on Glass Hill with, has no benefit to them.
Yeah, Glass, Glass Hill and Coomer, and then of course Cowden would be improved to 50-foot right-of-way. So we're closely with Dan on that. Okay, good.
The other thing that I think is, and that might be responsible, our responsibility, is the signage down there at the underpass, one lane.
One lane road ahead or your signs?
One lane through the underpass, because, what'd you say, 16 feet?
16 feet between the concrete butt, or the one concrete buttment to the back of the curb was 16 feet, which is currently there.
And there's, that's...
You might have another foot or something.
That's not enough for two cars to get through, so I really think the signage needs to be changed.
Darling, we don't even have to wait for the plan to start going for that. That's something we can do in-house, and Don can tell Joe personally.
Just like Frank says, I don't know if we should wait to put those signs up.
That's what I'm saying. I agree with you, I don't think we should wait. To me, that's something we do now.
I, what was it, the other day, the school bus came through, and if that car would've never got off on the ditch, there would've been a terrible accident.
Yeah, so let's not wait, let's do it now. Yeah, let's do it now. Don, will you tell Joe? Yeah.
Pardon me?
I said you're looking at a ballpark of $500 worth of signage.
Dan, we probably should have Mike approve that warrant, would you not agree? Just sort of sign location and...
We could take a look at a recommendation for signs and...
Right, okay. Yeah, just so we're reading the MUTCD, okay.
And Dan, excuse me, did you say at the top of the hill of Glass Hill that that would be so that the cars that are coming up, flying up, if you, if you don't get to the stop sign on Vincetti and Coomer, and really stop, count to 10 before you go to pull out, it's the cars coming up the hill more so than coming down Shafoni Road, because you could see.
Sure.
But it's the cars coming up Glass Hill. Glass Hill is a real problem.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, they, we just need a little sign plan. I think what, what Don's alluding to is, we just have the traffic guys take a look at it and see what they recommend on the signs and where to put them. It's not that complicated, but they take, take a look at it and see what makes sense.
All right, thank you, everybody. Anybody in the, here today have any comments or questions? I need you to come up here because it is being recorded. I almost said I know.
I'm sorry, it's being recorded and video.
I have my hand up, I didn't have it all the way up.
No, no, you just have to talk into a microphone so we can catch the recording. Otherwise, we get yelled at for not people at home not being able to hear.
Oh, okay. I'm born in Kyle, I live on Vinceni Road. Kyle, D-A-N, C-A-W-D-E-N. The road's named after us. Gentlemen, are you, did I hear you say you're gonna do some improvements on Vinceni Road? Is that one of the roads you're gonna be doing?
Down at the intersection, Bonnie, Route 980 and Vinceni Road. We need more site distance coming down Vinceni as you approach 980.
I understand that, but I'm talking about, I, I heard them say something about Vinceni.
Bonnie, but no, we're, we're looking at, considering them just giving us X amount of dollars, and then we'll allocate it where the improvements that we use, other than they will do Cowden Road. Any other improvements? We'll use it out of that $2,000 lot fee.
I understand that, Tom, also. I'm getting, every time I try to tell these people to slow down, I'm getting cops out or whatever.
Be careful.
We need more control up there. Those buses should not be on there. When I drove by, we were never allowed on Vinceni Road or Glass Hill. And I, I have eight buses, six to eight buses that go thirty, thirty-five through there. I could even give you the numbers if I have to. I just don't want more, I just need something down at Vinceni Road because it's hard to get to the mailboxes and pouring out of my driveway.
Well, I mean, as we get to it, we'll be making, considering all the improvements that should be made, and we'll be taking input. So it's a little early for that, but again, it's a good point.
Thank you.
The transportation coordinator would run the best bus routes once they get the plan established, too. I mean, it's not on us. Whatever routes they choose, I'm sure they would choose the best roads to run the buses on.
Hi, Kevin Camerson on fifteen Swire Road. Camerson, C-A-M-E-R-S-O-N. Chairman Cassiel, I just had one question. I figured one of the first conditions would be is, is asking the developer to do a traffic impact study. I mean, we, we've been discussing the last hearings about the intersection. I know we talked a couple of them, but there's more than those two you're just talking about.
That's gonna be coming up, right, Dan?
Well, it's not, it's not a condition Dan said. I mean, I figured he would, that'd be the first one on the list.
That's, that's in the ordinance. The traffic study is a decision of the board supervisors, it's not my decision.
It could be a recommendation, right, as an engineer?
Well, I, I think that the traffic study, I mean, I don't know what a traffic study's gonna tell you that we don't already know, we know.
Well, it's gonna tell you that adding a hundred and fifty-some houses is gonna impact these intersections that are maybe failing now or may not be failing. So we always, I mean, you asked before for studies, we should be get, we should get one done.
I, I don't, I don't disagree that, that, that things would be required, but I think as a part of what's being proposed here, we tried to list out the things that we know that are known deficiencies. So we're already working on the Coomer and Muse Bishop project to, to fix that situation at that intersection. So that's.
I understand those, yeah.
That's number one.
Yeah, you don't have to go over here, I, I see what they said, but I think, you know, we should have, you know, it should be a study done by an engineering company, it's, they do traffic studies.
That's input, that's, that's, wait, that's input you're giving us, and the ordinance does allow us to, we, we could require it like Dan said, but it's, it's, it's not.
Brought up.
All right.
And next thing is, you know, how about the, you know, the kids riding bikes, adults riding bike, people walking on Montour Trail crossing Cowden Road? I mean, something needs to be done down there. I mean, you're gonna be dumping traffic over that hill. That wasn't brought up, I mean, that needs to be considered, so.
Great, thank you, Kevin.
On a click, C-L-I-C-K, I live at forty-nine Ridgewood. I'm okay with this development, I guess, it's gonna happen no matter what. But one of the things that I'm concerned about, what is the plan of attack for when the construction vehicles? We're gonna have these big vehicles coming in? Are they gonna be coming up Cowden mainly? Because they're not gonna be able to come down Muse Bishop on Coomer because of that. They're not gonna come up Vinceni. So is Cowden gonna be the main place where these, all these vehicles are gonna be coming in to that development? And what's the plan of attack there? Because if it, if that's the case, and the gentleman that was just speaking, Cowden Road, that does, the trail does cross there. And right now, you know, there's stop signs on the trail because the trail is supposed to have the traffic control, I should say. And people ride there, you know, people are accustomed to that, and there's not a lot of traffic right now. So, hmm, okay, stop, look, real quick, and they keep going. Nobody really stops there, now that's, that's a problem for trail users. But I think there's gonna need to be signs on Cowden warning drivers there is a trail crossing there. Because there's gonna be a lot more traffic, because I, I can see, you know, because you're talking Glass Hill's a little narrow road. Muse Bishop, Co- Coomer, that's a tough intersection there, nobody uses that anymore hardly. So everybody's gonna be using Cowden, basically, to get down to fifty, to get out onto the highway. So there's gonna be a lot of traffic there, and I think we're gonna have to have, like that gentleman said, we need to have warning signs there for the cars saying, you know, there's a trail crossing here, please be careful, be slow. Because something's gonna happen there. I can just see it happening because as the weather gets nice, that trail gets used quite a bit. And one of the other concerns I have is, I, I couldn't see from back where I was at, the, where the retainment ponds are on this property. But the trail sits down below, and everybody knows water goes downhill. Right now, even during Hurricane Ivan, that trail was not flooded along that section. That stayed, it was wet, obviously, but it did not flood. And I can just see, I know you're gonna leave most of the trees there, I hope, going up the hillside. But when you clear off the top and you put in concrete and take away the grass that absorbs all of that water, I know there's gonna be retainment ponds, but my concern is the water coming down onto the trail. And I don't know if you're aware, but Montour Trail is all volunteer. We get all of our money from grants and donations. And I'm one of the people that maintain that part of that trail, and it's a lot of work as it is now. And we're not looking forward to having water running across the trail and having to fix that. Because there, we have all other areas that are already a problem. That area there is not a problem right now, and we wanna keep it that way. So, okay.
It's a fair point.
We're gonna keep a close eye on you guys, is what I'm saying. Because, I mean, I walk that, I live right up the street from there. So I am gonna be down there keeping an eye, and if I see water running down there, you're gonna get a phone call from me. I will. And that was the, my biggest problem is the Cowden crossing. I think something, we need to put something there because I, I'm assuming that that's where the traffic, where the trucks are gonna be coming in, carrying all the construction equipment, that, it's probably gonna go up Cowden Road.
They, they also have a choice of Shafoni Road, coming into Muse, Muse Bishop, and making a right onto Shafoni and coming straight down into the plant site.
That's true. Okay.
There's three choices here.
Yeah, but I'm just saying the easiest access to the, the highway is coming down Cowden, getting on fifty and going out that way. So if you're gonna put it in your GPS, it's probably the way it's gonna take you.
Depending on, you know, width of loads and stuff like that, the size of loads.
Yeah, but that's, that's something to keep in mind. I'm just worried about the safety of the trail.
Donna, good points, thank you.
Pardon me?
It's a good point, thank you.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? We have another hearing coming, starting at six forty-five on just an ordinance issue. But the board has no more questions for the applicant or for Dan, nothing else? Then I'm gonna declare this hearing closed, and it, it will be addressed at the public meeting tonight. There's an agenda item for it.